You ready? Well, the clock's on, we're gonna start. I didn't make you wait five minutes, so I called a meeting to order and we're gonna be led into the Pledge of Allegiance, our county administrator Sean up, and remain standing please for the invocation by Pastor Gray of the Presbyterian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I invite you to pray with me. Lord, we just praise you as a God of this wonderful creation that we're surrounded by, these mountains, Lord, we just thank you for the beauty that we see every day. We're thankful, Lord, for the breath in our lungs, the blood coursing through our veins, Lord, all life is a gift from you and help us to live with deep appreciation and constant thanksgiving. Lord, we're grateful for Smith County and for this region of the world that you've called us to live in here. We're grateful, Lord, for the opportunities we have here to raise families and to love one another and build a life of meaning and purpose. We pray your blessing on the supervisors, Lord, as they govern us, as they make decisions tonight, may they reflect your wisdom and may they sense your guidance as they make decisions that impact all of us. And bless them and their families, Lord, we're thankful for them, their sacrifice of time and effort, and just bless all those who work here in this building and all work for Smith County and our schools, among our first responders, Lord, among all the public servants who seek to make this a better place, a place of quality life and a place where we can live peaceful lives together, working in harmony. We pray for that harmony to be evident tonight as the business of this body is done and help us, Lord, to continually give thanks and praise to you for the blessings that we enjoy and we make our prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Don't know of any amendments to the agenda, so I think we can go right past that. We're up to the VDOT quarterly updates. Appreciate having y'all here.
Good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good. Well, for those that might not know me that's in the crowd, I'm Alan Sumter, I'm the VDOT residency administrator for the Abington office covering Washington Smith County. We try to come about once a quarter, give an update, take any questions that might have from the board and from the public while we're here. So I have, I hope you have a copy of the quarterly report in front of you, the, kinda go over a few things here, some of the highlights for you. One of the things I point out is that if you might recall, we had the project that was the Green Acres Evergreen Court Revenue Sharing Project that got put on hold just a few years back, it seemed like it started about the time that I was first coming here. That's a project where there was the $124,000 match by the county and the state and because of funding issues, it was going to be delayed, I think until like 25, 26, I believe it was, when we first opened with Lisa. And so now the state's in a position, they're gonna move those projects forward and looks like now we're anticipating getting that project off the ground in spring of 2023. So that's a little good news that that's been able to get what wasn't on the original schedule, it's actually been done a little bit quicker than what we thought was going to happen. As far as other rural rustic projects, we've been moving right along on the Old Slash Road rural rustic project that was on our schedule and then the next one that we will be moving on to later on to try to get started here in the fall is the 729 Kegley Lane and that's under one of our environmental review processes that we're going with and trying to get accomplished right now. Has got some other information on there, but I'll skip down to the recent maintenance activities. We still heavily involved in the mowing operations, pretty well about three quarters of the way done on primary and secondary on both of those. We've also been doing patching and other ditching and other types of maintenance activities as well that we try to get accomplished during the summer. One thing we don't have on there, but we're working on getting started, getting ready for winter. When you're in our business, that's one of the most dreaded times, a lot of people, I know just personally speaking, anytime a member of my family says they like to have a good snow, I threaten them at any time, so. But it is getting closer and closer to that time, we're working on getting our equipment ready, soon we'll be having inspections, getting contractors signed up and everything that goes with that, salt stocked and everything, it really is kind of about a year-long process, we don't ever really quit with snow. So on the second page, I just will mention too some other items that's on there, as you see, as we've mentioned, patching 645 Harris Lane, the patching is complete. We got some speed study requests from you and sometimes those take a little bit of time, but they're working on moving through those and as you know, we have the one on Route 91 that I know that Mr. Clark has submitted to you with the letter about that as well. And if would, I'd just like to address that one, be okay? I know you have the letter, would be okay if I address that one right now?
We put a copy of the letter at your desk.
So, couple of things that just wanna mention there with that, when we get a speed study request in, our process is the following, like we get one from any board that comes through, what we do is we send that to our traffic engineering department. And our traffic engineering department, they do several different things. They do a field study where they go out and actually collect the speeds, we have radar devices and so forth as well that pick up the speeds, we collect the current amount of traffic that's on the roadway and we also go back and we pull data regarding the reportable accidents that we have on file. When I say reportable, we collect those that are actually going to the system that are recorded by like either the county police or the Virginia State Police are the ones that go in when we say reportable, that goes in. And one of the things that happens there, if we know that probably in some cases there are some accidents that don't get reported, I know that again personally firsthand, I have two personal vehicles and within, I had, where I lived down in Lee County, I had back in, I guess it was May, in my pickup truck, I was coming home, actually the night from this meeting, well it was the last time I was here at this meeting, I got within a mile of my home and I hit a deer and did damage to my truck and I drove on into the home, reported it to my insurance and they took care of that for me and then got that vehicle back and about five days later, in my personal car, I hit another deer. So I've had two deer hits personally within just a matter of about two months or so. In both cases, those were accidents where that I was able to drive on, I know the state police is not gonna come out and do, you know, necessarily deer report those, the insurance now, they will process them without that and so those don't go into the system and are not captured necessarily in that regard. So unless there is some kind of property damage where there's actually a police report, we don't get those. So in the case of Route 91, the accident data that we have that has come up is that there were only two crashes that were reported in the last three years and as mentioned there, those were animal strikes that resulted in property damage. Now, another thing that was with the study that was collected on this section of roadway is we have a lot of statistical data that comes into play and one of the things that is the standard that's looked at nationally is what's called the 85 percentile speed. The 85 percentile speed is the speed where that it's based upon that 85% of the traffic is normally traveling at that speed upon in that section of roadway that is examined and that is the goal of, it's actually a federal type of standard that the speed limits be based upon the 85 percentile speed that's out there. And so in this case, when we collected the data, the 85 percentile speed was the 55 miles per hour that was posted. Mr. Clark refers to a median speed, I think of 48, again, that's another type of statistical information, it's like if you take all the data that runs together, that's not the 85% of the speed running it, but from the top to the bottom, you take the lowest speed and the highest speed, you average it out and that's a statistical data that comes in like 48 in that case, but that's not what the speed limits are based upon. So in this case, this section, there have been some sign work and things that's been done, we looked at the signs that's there and that's another thing that we look, we look at the sections that might have guard rail, look at, as I said, all the different types of sign, the geography and types of the roadway and in the case of this, our traffic engineers did not recommend changing the speed limit. One of the things that comes into play too with, for our roadway system is that when we post a speed limit and with these standards that are set and are acceptable through the American State Highway Transportation Officials, that's the standard and that's what I mean when you're looking at a federal standard, is that we're required to base in that standard so that the speed limit is justifiably enforceable when it goes to court. And so we basically, I guess the way I can paraphrase that is that one of the things that we're tasked with is not setting a speed trap, if that makes sense. And so we have to set within these guidelines and so I've seen cases before, like one of the things will happen, if somebody suspects that the speed limit is not set according to these standards and they go and get an attorney, then they come out and the attorney will request a copy of the speed study and the basis, and if we can't justify that, then when it goes to court, it can very well, very quickly be thrown out of court because the ticket's not considered by court system to be enforceable based upon the speed study. So I'm not here trying to make excuses as to whatever of what Mr. Clark's arguments are about that, I know we all have times that when we're out there that, I'm sure that many of us do, that we travel a section of roadway and we have that feel that the roadway just needs to be a lower speed limit or that, you know, we'd like to set it lower 'cause we live there or whatever, but there are a lot of factors that go into the equation of us setting the speed limit. And one thing that I mentioned too, as far as the process goes, is that the setting of the speed limit is an action that's set forth through law by the Commonwealth Transportation Board to the commissioner and the commissioner delegates it to like the district traffic engineers, but it again has to be set. I know Mr. Clark, in his letter to you, asked that the, that the board basically vote to set the speed limit and I've noticed that in one of the last, I think, I think I've got his letter, it's in here, somewhere.
His last paragraph?
Last paragraph, oh yeah, there it is, hey, right in front of me. Said, "I'm asking the board to reduce the speed to 50 or refer it back to VDOT for further study." Well, as we know, he's worked, you know, in the municipal setting, you know, for several years, well, one of the things that is different when towns, you know, many times we'll travel into a town and you'll go into the limits of that municipality and there'll be a sign up that says, "Speed limit 35 and less posted" or something like that. When they are like under the urban program, like as an example, Town of Marion or so forth like that, they have got more latitude in being able to set their speed limits in those, within those boundaries than, you know, than entities like counties do, actually, that's just the way that's set. So saying it means no disrespect to you, y'all can request the speed study, but ultimately VDOT is charged to follow the guidelines that are set forth for speed studies and the final decision's based upon that through the Commonwealth Transportation Board's authority to the commissioner on whether a speed limit is set, whereas a town has a little bit flexibility within their boundaries, again, to set a speed limit that's like the 35 or the 25 on that, and that is part of the reason for that is to allow towns to address a lot of the little small alleys and streets and recognizing there are more side roads and things in that, that you could spend a lot of time analyzing and probably would end up coming up in the end that there was an 85 percentile speed because of the density of traffic and so forth in it, that's gonna come up with a speed that's gonna be 25 to 35 miles per hour or something like that. So we just, we checked with our traffic engineer prior to coming to the meeting tonight, that we'd received from Sean the letter and asked us to, you know, consider what we could do and maybe be prepared to talk to you tonight about it and again, if it's the board's desire that they want us to, you know, to want us to look at it again, we can take that request, but basically we find that the data that's there, we don't know that there's going to be anything very apparent that's going to probably change the answer from what we gave you that's in the letter back in July the 20th. And I realize that sometimes we give unpopular answers at different times, but that's our answer based upon the traffic engineering staff that's involved in doing the studies, the accidents, the, looking at the geography, the speed study data, that that's where it comes to. So if conditions were changed or something in the future, we always are open to taking a look at it and a lot of people interpret that, okay, you know, I've stood before people before and they're like, well, does someone have to die or whatever like that before we will do anything, that's not the case of what it's all, but we, our decisions and analysis are based upon the best data that we have at the time in order to be able to come to the conclusion that we have and that's where we are with this matter. So with that, before I move on, do you have, do you have any questions for that? And I'd be glad to get Josh up there, who is our traffic engineer expert if we need to as well.
I wanted to ask you about the Green Acres Drive.
Oh, so you're not asking me about this one?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, first, before we do that, can I ask if anybody else has anything related to the traffic study?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, by definition, the median 48 is the average of the fastest car that's been recorded.
And then like the slowest.
And then the slowest.
That's not the, what we consider to be the 85 percentile?
So my question is, if this number is based on the fastest, if you've got people driving faster than they should do, that number's gonna artificially inflate if you're recording them, correct?
It probably would, but you, in statistical data, it's not necessarily with median and I always know, I had trouble with statistics in school, that's one of my problems, is it's not necessarily the single lowest that's in there, but it's like the average of the numbers, uppers and the average of the numbers lower and they take that together to get what the median data is. Is that not right, Josh? It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily zero.
It's not the average speed, it's the average.
Yeah, it's not.
It's one of those exactly in the middle.
Yeah, it's not necessarily zero and 100 and so two makes 50, it's that you take all the 60s and add them up and you take all the 55s and add them up and all that and then take the numbers of that and then that's where then you get what's called the median speed based upon the number of samples that you've collected.
So it would take into account the density of each targeted number?
Yes.
Okay. So then this, this study is showing that 48 has the, is the, has the largest density on mathematical statistical analysis that falls in that range?
That's just a, honestly, it's just a number, it is the number that's...
So I guess my question is, if you have people driving faster through there, that number's gonna go up if you're looking at it at that moment in time?
If there are more numbers of traffic that's above that, the more numbers that is, actually in some ways then the lower that number is, is a better sign, really.
Do you know what the mean speed for that study was?
I don't know that we have the mean speed.
No, I don't think we, they placed that on there, I can try to find that.
What it comes down to is, speed limit's gonna stay the same, we can't change.
For the board, it's not, it's, yeah, it's not, it's not within the purview of the board to change the speed limit, no, that's what I was trying to explain, it's not within the purview of the board to change the speed limit, you can ask us to, you can ask us to perform a safety study, which was done and we did that and the result is that the 85 percentile speed is, or it should be for the speed limit to be 55 miles per hour. I mean, I'm not trying to be cutting anybody off or anything, but that's what they're telling us in the report.
So we trust the experts and move on?
That's right. It's not 55 all the way down through there anyway?
There is a section of it that's...
Several different changes.
There was a section's 35, but in this, this situation, it is...
I think we, I'm not across, but we got that clear, we don't plan moving on.
And I apologize if I'm confusing about it, but there is, like the statistics always is confusing there to some degree, but the bottom line is, is that according to our data and our studies that we perform on all of them, it's saying that the speed limit should remain 55.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask our two board members that represent that area, does that seem like a reasonable rate?
Yeah, you know, I come to, I agree with them and, you know, we asked them to do it and the final decision's up to them, but I come through there the other night and from a ballgame, matter of fact, and, you know, changes 35, 40, I don't know, I don't say it wrong, so, you know, I think they're spot on. I don't know, what I'm sitting here wondering, and I'm gonna move on, but I'm sitting here wondering, well, did we waste our time asking for a speed study in any of these because evidently you probably do speed studies from time to time and I probably said it in a search place, but we've already asked for them, so it'd be good that you go do it.
Well, I don't know if I remember, seemed like I may have addressed this in a previous meeting and if I didn't, forgive me, if I did, forgive me, but when you get a request from your constituents that comes in that they're concerned about a particular piece of roadway, the outlook that I suggest that you take is asking us to perform a safety study of that section of roadway, not necessarily just changing the speed limit, but a safety study, because when we, when we do that, we do more, again, there's more solutions that we look at other than just changing the speed limit. A lot of people, they think that, okay, they contact you, they contact us and it's like, okay, you know, this section of road, there's been three wrecks in there or there's been four and we're concerned about the safety of that. Well, when we actually look at these, the thing that you, you know, please understand is we're looking at it from a safety, we bring the safety part of it in there and so we look at whether there needs to be curving signs, you know, you've got, the yellow, like a lot of folks get mistaken, they think the yellow sign is like a speed limit sign. The yellow signs that says with the curve shape on them, it's about say 35 in a 55 mile per hour section, is to advise traffic that, okay, overall, say for instance, use an example, on a 10-mile section of roadway, you're now traveling through a section of this roadway that you need to slow down slower than the 55 mile per hour speed limit in order to go a little slower to go through here, you might need to slow down to 40 or whatever, that's our recommendation. Can you make it at 55? Yes, you can still make it at 55, but maybe there's some good conditions that's there that we recommend that you travel a little bit slower. We'll look at for, you know, the need of guard rail, we'll look at it for deer, whether there needs to be deer crossing signs, they'll look at, so we look at them more from a standpoint of just a safety study rather than just going to lower the speed limit. So anytime you make those, that would be my suggestion, that you ask us on a section of roadway that you have constituents that are concerned with, that you ask us to do a safety study to see if it might warrant any type of signs, guard rails, any kind of pavement change or something of that nature that might, in that situation, that whatever those concerns are, that might make it a little safer during that. Does that make sense?
More than that, yes.
Okay.
That's a good job.
Okay, all right. I think I have covered the big part of the majority of this, I'm going to ask and let, see if Matthew or Josh have anything to come up and then you can ask them while they're here, I know somebody talked specifically to Matthew, particularly a lot of times about different areas of things. One thing that I do want to bring before you and just let you know, I, this is going to be my last visit myself with you here in front of the board in this, effective next week, I'm assuming a different role, same role actually with the department in, back in the wise residency. I was asked to move and go back over there to the district management and I've reluctantly agreed to do that, there's some personal reasons and business reasons that comes into play with me doing that, but you're still gonna be in good hands, I've tried to pack the Lewis boys up in a suitcase with me, but I've not found one yet that will fit them into it, so they, they're Smith County guys, so I can't get them to go with me, but they're going to, they're going to be here. Matthew, starting next week, will be the acting residency administrator in my place, the position has been advertised and we will see, you know, what, what happens there with that, maybe you can talk one of the two of them in to apply. Maybe you can co- uh talk one of the two of them in to applying to take my place. We'll see there how that happens. But I do want to tell you that um one of the difficulties in moving myself is when you have a group of people to work with, and the staff that I have at Abingdon has been an absolute pleasure to work with, and you as a board have been a pleasure to work with too. The professionalism that we have in both of our counties, really, I'm very appreciative of, and we've worked with with John and with Lisa here the last few years and through COVID and trying to get things done. And I just want to thank both of you all particularly and working with you all. And I want to say that you all have a special place to me and will continue to wish every one of you very, very well. So um.
Is that something this board can vote on at Wise?
Yeah. No, I am going to say that it will get me a little bit closer to home, and like I said, I have personal reasons. I have a couple, my my parents are getting a little um, they, my father just turned eighty-five, and my mother will turn eighty before long, and she's had a few little health problems herself that probably will be a little handier maybe if I'm a little bit closer to home. So I guess I'm sure everybody's kind of has dealt with some of those types of things that's come up in in the past in there. So, but I will miss uh working with you, and again, I I hope that we've accomplished some things. There are times I know that, as I always tell you, we're not perfect. With the big living, they'll be a little less perfect. No, I'm just joking, I'm just joking. But uh we have tried and continued to try, and I'm sure that the staff that will remain there at the the office will will keep serving serving you just as as good. I'm just part of the of the little bit of the cog that makes it happen. So.
Mr. Sturrock, I think I've got a question here, but I gotta make one comment before you answer a question. Once you get to Wise, once you get to Wise, I'd like you to report back to us and let us know if the deer in that area used the deer crossing signs.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, well, I know they, I may, where I've hit the two deer uh in my personal vehicle back home, I may put signs up moving, so I will know where the deer are going to cross, so they don't cross in front of me in these other two places, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Sturrock.
I feel certain that Matthew's been putting book lure on your vehicles.
Oh, yeah, you think so? It might be, yeah, okay, right.
Just real quick, I just want clarification on the, you talk about Green Hill, Green Hill, Green Acres Drive and Evergreen Court. So you said that starts in the spring of twenty twenty-three?
That's uh, that's our plan of what we hope to move forward with now. The funding is there, so when the funding is there, then that authorizes like Josh and our staff and our district staff to start working to do all the clearances environmentally, all the the uh engineering work that I'd say in order to get that moving in that direction. And so we'll be planning to use our hired equipment contracts and and work to accomplish the construction of that. And um again, I can't give you the exact date, but that's should be planned to, you know, everything goes good and everything gets cleared to work next spring on that.
Okay. Well, the residents there, still, will they pay the road maintenance fee, like to bring it up to state maintaining? How does that work?
So the way that I don't know exactly, and that probably is a question that um do you all have the setup to where that the the county share that they?
Yes, we do. We.
Okay, I'll let her explain how that works.
Over a ten-year period. So those.
Okay.
Those residents would have to do that through tax assessment. I have a question, if I may.
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So does the cost still stay at two hundred and forty-eight thousand, although this was a number of years ago? I I would have thought that the cost would have changed or increased.
That's our.
Is that your policy?
At this time, I think that what we try when we do those, and we were setting that cost up there, that we're trying to make that because it was already out. See, you're really not going to end up, if that'd been twenty-five, twenty-six, it probably might have been a little bit more questionable. It's in there, but when we get a project that's there with that, then we will strive to make it fit within what we can. There are contingencies and things, it's built in that estimate to start with, and so it just makes the contingencies and things a little bit tighter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
One, just one last thing, just a ballpark guess.
Twelve.
What would you think that you could start seeing roadwork done there, just like I said? It was impossible to make a guess.
Do you?
I would say, um, I'd probably say about May.
About May, okay.
Okay.
Because I know I'll get asked that question, so I just want to give a, I'm going to tell them it was strictly a ballpark guess, so about May of twenty-three.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, it's around, but I would say.
Thank you.
Well, I know I've taken up a bit of time, but I I was just going to ask, I'll ask Matthew and Josh, or ask you all, is there anything? And then we'll get out of your way. You did, did you have anything extra? Okay, y'all have anything else for us?
Any questions, anyone?
We appreciate you.
The pronouns that you gave has answered a lot of the questions, we thank you.
Okay, like I said, these are, you know, are not, they're not easy. When it's in front of your house, you know, we realize that it is what's important to you right there, and you know, the your concerns, and we don't try to make light of them, but we have the certain processes and standards that we have to go that um go into it. And we have a county attorney over here, and he probably can know how that uh things like that work whenever they become issues and challenges there, so. Okay?
We thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you're good, alright, then we'll, we will be gone. Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck with your new position.
Thank you, best wishes.
I think we have a group of men in the back, excuse me, men and women in the back row. I apologize, I just, anyway, wanted to speak to us about the Saltville EMS. Come forward and introduce yourselves and.
My name is Kyle Brewster. It's been a year now since I stood here in front of you guys. But I have Rochelle Lowman, the famous Rochelle Lowman that you read in the newspapers, and then the unfamous Jamie Tolliver with me. Rochelle's our office manager, and Jamie is our operations manager um over in Saltville. Um, I just wanted to give you guys a brief update on what, everything that we've been doing over the last year, on things that we've been able to accomplish. If you guys remember when we were here before, um, the previous rescue squad, they had um some outdated equipment, trucks, um, and some financial things going on at that time. But I just want to let you know that um when we started out, we started out with ten employees who were active. Uh, we currently now have thirty employees that who are active with us. Out of those thirty, we have nine ALS providers, nineteen of those are EMTs, and three are EVOC drivers. Seven of those EMTs are currently in paramedic school, and three will be starting next year. So all within the next two years intermittently, we'll be adding up to another ten paramedics to the service. And that will, basically, at that point, we will be running double paramedic trucks. So we're um, we're on target for that. That was our goal when we first started, and um we're 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 almost there. We've uh, but the structure that we have created has allowed us currently, we are um able to provide a hundred percent ALS services at twenty-four hours a day, every day of the week, based off the structure that we have. I know, I believe you have a copy of the service structure in your package, I believe. As you can see, that um me and Rochelle are kind of at the top, and then we have Jamie and Travis, who is our training coordinator, they're both paramedics. Um, our compliance officer, Peyton Austin, she is also a paramedic, and then all of our supervisors are paramedics as well. So we're using a tiered system for response, so we will staff a unit with a BLS unit with two EMTs. When a call comes out, if it is potentially an ALS call, the supervisor will respond with the unit in the QRV. And if it is an ALS call, then they will switch out, and the paramedic will get on the ambulance, turn it into an ALS truck, and then the QRV will go back and be prepared for the second calls. That's the system that we're kind of using right now, and it's been working very well. Let's see. So one of the um issues that in the past was the um the stress that was being placed on the other services such as Chill Howie. They have kind of been the backbone for the county as far as primarily based off location to help support Saltville as well as Marion and other areas. But we have significantly reduced the calls that have been rolled to them, so we have greatly reduced that stress on Chill Howie. We pulled the numbers earlier, um, I think.
January first, we had to turn over ten calls.
Yes, ten calls, and those calls that we did have to roll, um, it Murphy's Law, every time we send a truck to get maintenance or is broke down, that's when the calls start dropping. So those are the times that we've had to rely on Chill Howie to to in those situations. We have reduced our shoot times. The shoot times are the times from the time of dispatch to wheels rolling on in the ambulance. I believe that the uh the county response plan initially was three minutes before roll, before we reach home. Our times now are currently under ninety seconds, and we're pushing to be under sixty seconds. We've made a few operational changes where that will definitely be reachable within the next couple of months. So our shoot times will be reduced greatly, and they should be ninety percent of the time under sixty seconds. That's what our goal is. We have reduced our, the refusal rate, when initially when we got started, it was a refusal rate of approximately about forty percent. We have gotten that down to eighteen percent. That's just a statistic that is typically measured for EMS efficiency. So we're not just going out looking for, just trying to get refusals on people just to make the job easier. We're, we're actually starting to transport more patients. We do have, we're still trying to solve the problem of the NIBO series area of reducing our response times. We talked with a gentleman where the Saltville Rescue Squad used to have a substation out there. We talked with him in length, and he's unwilling to allow us to use that site anymore. But we have found some property that we are trying to find the funds to buy that property so we can put up a metal structure there in the, it's close to where that substation is. It's just a little bit down Wilderness Trail. It's approximately a half a mile from the intersection. If we can um get our hands on that property and put a structure up, we can reduce our times from thirty to ten to fifteen minutes. And I think, I mean, that area really needs more support than what they have. So that's one of the things that we're working on, trying to um get people out there, so we can actually help them a little bit more.
Mr. Chairman, don't mean to interrupt you, but while we're on the spot in that way, I thought the school would get us a.
We we approved this lane there, right below between River and Rich Valley on the north side.
Right, I know we had had that conversation, um, and I don't, I don't know what the outcome of.
The school board approved it.
Did they? Okay, um, so that that's one area that is, would be very helpful. And then we're also going to be trying to get one farther out towards the NIBO area, um, like out there at sixteen, maybe just beyond. So we've had some calls here recently where we've actually reduced our times by ten to twelve minutes responding to some of that area just by changing our route to get there. But it's still over thirty minutes, which is unacceptable, and we we need to get that that down to under ten if we can.
Mr. Chairman, don't, we have a convenience station up there, can't, or or it used to be. How much property is that?
Long enough for what, take.
Long enough to put a building.
It's already very long to rear.
It's not.
But I think if you're giving a property area to school, it's going to save you some money.
Yeah, um, and.
Station area will cut a lot of time off going to NIBO.
It it would, um, we um, me and Jamie here, we went driving one day, and at that property, it to, from where we are to Veterans Road saves us seven minutes, so it was twelve.
From from our station to Veterans Road was.
But Long Hollow Road was, I think, twelve, thirteen?
It was thirteen minutes.
Yeah, so that would reduce it by thirteen minutes from that location.
NIBO fire department.
Um, they do have a three um, three bay station out there. I have talked with the uh NIBO fire chief, um, and that doesn't seem to be an option at this time.
Of course. Would you mind telling me why?
Um, I I don't have an answer for you.
Because, you know, y'all in the fire department both get money, so like in the past, I've seen things that just, people just didn't work together. And if that's what it is, I'd like to know.
Yeah, we're we're trying to to get out there because that's, we've got the staffing and we've got the trucks to do it, and we're just trying to.
Reason why they didn't work up one of them?
Um, I honestly, I don't have an answer for you for that.
I hate when people ain't got an answer.
I think I might be able to answer that. I think I might be able to answer that.
Well, if the chairman will entertain it, I'd sure like to.
I don't think they have room for us there.
And Mr. Coulter, was that the person you was talking about before, that used to have the other station, he didn't, they didn't.
So, correct. So Jim Coulter was, he had donated the land to the rescue squad. And part of the agreement with the rescue squad was that when they ceased to staff that or stage an ambulance in it, that it would return back to him. And I I was not privy to all this. This all happened prior to to me coming to Saltville.
I was there.
You were, that is correct. You were on the board at the time. And so when whenever they stopped putting an ambulance out there, he ended up getting it back, and he's turned it into.
Purchased it back.
He did, he bought it back, and so he's using it as a barn now. The problem with NIBO is not, it, I I don't think that they have room for us in their station. It it would require, and I have never been in that station, I'm not a hundred percent sure that it's, I don't think that they have the room to put the ambulance inside or the staff.
If you've got the ground, like they're at the school, which is a good central location both ways, I think, to NIBO and many other areas of Rich Valley, it takes a while to get to.
Correct.
So if you got that land, evidently the school is going to give it to you. So do you have a plan to erect something? Do you have the funds? What are you going to do? What's the thing? You're talking about a couple of different places here, which is all good, but you know, I don't know that, how you're going to chew all this.
Right, so we were, we had not heard anything back about the land, the property on Long Hollow. So we, I'll I'll actually let Kyle speak on that, because he'll know more.
Almost like this is something that should be discussed in the EMS committee meeting, and let them come to us with the tool.
I agree. I'm good with that.
I think we're wasting our time here talking. I don't mean that disrespectfully, but.
No, I'm fine, but I just, if they give an update, I just want to hear.
Yeah, just, um, but as far as funding and things go, if I, if you don't mind me just saying that um, we are working on a grant towards that, um, and a- any option that we can come up with for the planning to actually put a structure there for us.
Well, I hope you get a structure there, I will say that.
Yeah, I I mean, that's, it's been on my mind over the last year, um, because whenever we had the meeting before, um, there were some events that occurred that sparked that conversation, and I really don't want those events to occur again. So over this past year, we have received um three hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars in grants through the um, through the Office of OMS. One of those grants assisted in the funding of a new ambulance that we received through an emergency grant. It also has allowed us to purchase six brand-new um LifePak fifteen monitors. We recently received an auto pulse ventilator and some more. We recently received an auto pulse, uh, ventilator, and some more training equipment. So, we, our, our equipment that we're using is now updated, and it's, um, it's very helpful to have that equipment. So, the equipment is being updated. Um, and we also just bought, uh, two more brand-new ambulances. Um, they're the van style, um, and they should be here ready to go in about three weeks. Um, so, we will have, um, a total of five units, um, that we can utilize at any time. On the graphs that I provided you, um, I hope you guys were able to take a look at those. Um, the first one, the call trends between the Saltwell Rescue Squad and Saltwell EMS, um, make sure we're looking at the same one, it's got the two lines going down. Um, you can see that the, um, the red line there is the separation of when the first day that we took over operations was at Saltwell EMS, and since then, the trends have, um, started going up. So, it is believed at this point that the call volume is starting to go up because the trust of the community is starting to come back. Um, I know the entire county as a whole has seen an increase in call volume, um, but, and that is kind of represented there at the, um, that end line over there. There's some other things that occurred in that timeframe to cause it to go up, um, but you can see the trend going upwards since the time we have taken over. The total dispatch calls, um, this is another trend line there that you can see of total dispatches. Um, and the green line off to the upper left there, that's just where this next year is already starting to trend. So, we are increasing our, um, call volume, um, which is a good thing for an EMS service. And then on the next one, you can see the total refusal percentages, um, and the purple line there represents us as Saltwell EMS versus where it was at with the Rescue Squad. So, you can see a dramatic change in, um, refusal rates, being that the purple is being low, so we've reduced, reduced those refusals significantly. The next one with the, uh, green lines with the red one there, that is, uh, basically our total billing revenue that we have received from those nine-one-one calls. The red line again is where we took over. The initial drop there that you see is the first three months where we weren't able to bring in any billing income. Um, and then that large spike is where, once we were able to bill, everything just flooded in at once, and then it kinda leveled off a little bit. Um, and then some of the changes that you can see that we've made towards the end of the line there, it just keeps, we're, we're going up as far as revenue coming in, um, with some of the, um, operational changes and charting and things like that.
Do you hard bill or soft bill?
We soft bill. Um, so I just, numerically on those graphs, you can see the changes that we're making. Uh, we're definitely going in a, um, a good direction, um, with the services that we're providing, and you can see it there in those numbers. So, just the kinda, with those averages, prior to us, the average transport rate, just patients taken to the hospital, the average was forty-seven transports per month. Right now, we are trending at about a hundred and twenty per month, so we have almost tripled the amount of patients that we are transporting to the hospital. So, the community is getting the service that they need, um, and encouragement for those, for their health, pretty much. Last time I was here, I emphasized a lot on training. Since then, we, um, Travis Lowman, he has gotten his educational coordinator, um, which is a huge step. Um, we are now able to have our monthly continuing education, and those hours actually go towards, um, our employees' certification, so we can maintain their certifications, so there's, they don't have to worry about it, and they don't have to go out and find all these classes to maintain those certifications. We're maintaining them for them. Um, and also, this week, Tuesday was our first night where we have started our first EMT class that is solely our class. Um, and tonight's actually second night, that's why Travis couldn't be here because of that class. Um, but we, um, we're really excited about that. So, we are having, um, an EMT academy, really, it's not just a class, but they're gonna come out of class with their CPR, their EVAP, um, and their certifications, so they're, when they get out in the field, they are ready for a job no matter where they go. Um, there's no more, any more classes that they have to take, they're just ready to go. On top of the EMT class, we have four instructors now who can teach the CPR, ACLS pals, all the alphabet soup that we all say in EMS. Um, we can teach all of those in-house, maintain those certifications, as well as, um, for assistance in keeping that education going in the community. And then we started an explorer program through the Boy Scouts of America. So, we have, um, we're reaching out to the high schools, getting, um, and those ages are really from fifteen to age of twenty-one, where we can get the youth involved in our industry and get them excited about it. Um, we've had a few so far that have graduated, and they have gone through an EMT class and are currently testing out for that. Um, so we have, we're starting to see a little bit of, um, progress with that, but we're continuing the explorer program. As far as community involvement goes, we are doing monthly CPR classes, um, to help train our community in CPR, so we can help increase the, the survival chain of life, um, when people go into cardiac arrest. We also have started a child safety seat program. We, um, got, um, one person, we're getting some more people, um, certified and doing, like, child safety seat techs, so the community can come and we can make sure that the child seats are, um, installed properly. Um, and through that, there are grants come along with it, so in the event that there's a individual with a child in the vehicle that gets involved in a wreck, the seat that they have is no longer viable, so we will have the ability to provide them with another seat for safe transport of their child. And for Labor Day, we, um, we attempted to, uh, provide a, uh, health screening there at the, um, stage area in town. It wasn't a large turnout, but we did get a few people come through. Um, but we're really starting to push our community involvement, um, and get more people and educate them what we can do and how we can help them. And as far as that goes, um, some of the future plans that we have for this upcoming year, uh, we are currently in the process of starting up a community paramedicine program. Is anyone familiar with that? So, a community paramedicine program is, um, individuals who are certified in certain, got certain certifications, you can go out into the community and educate the community by themselves. Um, say, you can isolate one thing, like, say, diabetes. Uh, they, we can go out to their house and help educate and help them control their diabetes. Um, this is a benefit to help people getting remitted into the hospital, um, and the, the hospital does, a lot of times, provide support for these programs, um, because they get a big fine if they get a remittance within twenty-eight days? Thirty days. So, if anybody is remitted to the hospital, they pay a big fine, so they're kinda willing to spend a dollar to save none, kinda idea. Um, but that, that's one avenue. There's also grants out there to start these programs. Again, we should start to see double paramedic trucks here in the very near future. Um, we're currently, I've been talking with Curtis, and we're trying to get a fire rehab trailer, uh, built, um, to help the fire departments when they are on scene of a fire to help monitor the, our actual firefighters, and so we can make sure, you know, blood pressures and everything is good, rehydration, give them fluids if we need just to help support them, so they don't, you know, go in, because the suits and everything that they wear, they, they get pretty hot, and just kinda help them out more. Um, that's one of the things that we're trying to do. Um, also, we're gonna start providing, um, free CPR classes for new parents, um, so prior to the new parents having their child, that we can provide them a free CPR class, so they, um, they're prepared for anything that could potentially happen with their new child. Yeah, and that's really about all I have as far as updates. I mean, it kinda sounded like a lot, but that was just a few of them that we've done. But, um, I think we're making enormous strides in what we're doing, and we, uh, keep looking to the future and gonna keep doing the best that we can. Um, does anybody have any questions about anything?
If you have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Like Kyle said, I was at the Labor Day festival, and their presence was outstanding. Every direction you looked, no matter where you were at, you seen either one or two members of this squad, and the trucks sitting very close to the center of everything. They were really put on a big presence at that place, and I noticed it, and I know other people noticed it. It's a good job. They're very professional now, and I'm getting all positive output from the community. It is growing, you can feel it. I utilized them one time for my wife as transport, very professional. I think she hit on two of the young ones. She has dementia, and she was hitting on them, I believe. They were very professional, done a good job, it's great. Billing was great, I had no problem with anything. I know where that come from, and, so, keep it up, keep up, good work, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board?
Maybe if you don't mind, or go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I, I...
Oh, you were pointing at me, okay, great. Well, you answered most of my questions that I had written down. Um, I just wanna say kudos to you all. My goal was, the Chair of Public Safety Committee is that every ambulance in this county is ALS. I would love to see that happen before my time on the floor is up, but thank you for doing that.
It's coming.
Yes. Um, one question I do have is what percentage of your calls do you transport to JMH versus Smith County?
Um, we transport based off, um, patient choice, really. I think the majority of our patients do choose to go to JMH over Smith County. Um, it, it's just a personal preference. Where we are located at, it's twenty-five minutes this way, twenty-five minutes that way. I believe that the majority of our patients are going to JMH, though.
That's what I thought, just kinda confirms some of the other concerns that have come from folks in the community, so I wanted to ask that question. Uh, and then the other, I know we had some concerns with finances and different things in the past, so I'm just curious if your financial status...
Um, I, I did provide you with a financial statement, um, for last year, um, last fiscal year, um, and what you see there is everything to include, um, the support of the county as well as the support of the town. Um, you'll see, it says on there a loss of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred. That is with the counts in, the support from the town assisting with the payroll. Um, so that is the cost of everything for the entire year. So, basically, that's what the town had, had to pay out with all the, everything involved.
Which brings up a question I have. You mentioned earlier in your presentation, you had three hundred and forty in grant money.
Yes, sir.
Why isn't that on here?
Um...
Coming up after June thirty. So, this is just, thirty, is that... I guess that was just an overstatement.
Did it just go to capital expense and didn't get any, because you, you really don't, I don't see any capital expense in op, in, in op, in the operation expense here, so...
So, good, good eyes. Good eyes.
Well, that brings me to my next question. I don't understand, you got the additional payroll support by Town of Saltwell, did they give you them? They paid the payroll, correct?
They pay the initial cost of the payroll, and the money is given back to the town through the funds that we bring in.
But the hundred and thirteen thousand, nine sixty-eight, that's what they paid that was not reimbursed to the town, correct?
Correct, correct.
So, that's really not ca, that's a, that's really not a use of funds, is it?
No, it, it, it wasn't a use of funds, I just wanted to put that in there to show that is the actual cost of everything that we've done.
Cause if you kick Gary out, you're pretty well to break even with everything else.
Very close. And then also, if you look at the, um, the truck setup and maintenance, there's a hundred and two thousand dollars there. Um, that number represents all the money that we had to put in to keeping the trucks on the road. Um, we, we have put a lot of trucks in the road, hence that's why we have a new truck, we just bought two more, um, because the ones that we have are just costing us way too much.
And one final question, up under the, uh, income, you have county payments, including ninety thousand debt instrument.
That is correct.
So, you have ninety thousand of debt up there, debt service. Down below, you only use, you only show thirteen thousand debt service. Is the rest of it your capital, uh, principal on debt service that's shown somewhere else?
That was a seven-year loan that we are paying back over seven years.
Okay.
At thirteen a year.
Okay. Good enough, I'll shut up.
And that, and our goal is to have that paid off by the end of this first year.
Okay.
Or second year, excuse me.
Kyle, the reason that the grant money is not on there is because the grant money went to the town.
And the town.
Okay. Cause the town bought the ambulances and so forth technically.
So, the town, the way it's set up, the grants that OMS provides us goes into the main grant funds that comes to the town.
Just trying to make sure we have our ducks in the right pond.
Yes.
Okay, anything else for us?
Um, I don't have anything unless you guys have any more options or questions.
Thank you for your time now.
Thanks, Kyle.
Hmm?
Hope you have continued success.
Thank you. And we are here to help the county in any way as far as for anything that you guys think from us.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you. We're up now to go public hearings. Anybody need a break? Minutes of the last meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at those in our packet?
Move to approval, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty. Do we have a second? So, don't be so shy, okay, we have a second. Any others, any discussion? Here you go, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Absent.
We have two abstentions, so, one, two, three, four, four yay, and two abstentions and one absent today. Financial status report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you should have your financial reports there on your desk in front of you. The only thing I will just touch, uh, just received is a, a lot of the four o'clock today, but the only thing I'll touch base on is, uh, the bank balance at the end of August was eighteen million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-three cents, and that's, um, that's trending above where we were this same time last year. Uh, you have your revenue summary there for before you, and expenditure summary, you have, and the treasurer's accountability. Got what you mean?
Yes. And I don't know, I, I asked Sean this earlier, and I, I don't know how much of a chance y'all had to look at the financials that we received in your summary, but I don't know if y'all paid attention to how much we've collected off the cigarette taxes so far. About a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars already off the cigarette tax, so, that was an interesting figure to me when I saw it.
What, what were we budgeted for or anticipating to, if you're, for the year?
Yeah.
And where?
One fifty-seven.
Over half.
I just, I thought I, for some reason, I wanted to point that out, sir, if I would know. Moving on now, that's the payment, uh, we need to pay the invoices attached, you had a complete list of the, uh, invoices that, uh, checks that were issued, we need to approve those. Everybody have a chance to go to and... Everybody have a chance to go to and see who was spending the county money and why?
That's why we need ALS, and it's just 'cause all these people snuck in.
Do we have a motion to approve the, uh...
So moved, sure.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a couple of seconds here. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed likewise? Alrighty. Citizens' time. I'm sure no one signed up, anybody wish to speak?
I've spoken up.
Enlighten us, Mr. Watson, with your words of wisdom.
We missed you, I will tell you that.
Yeah, I missed being here.
Yeah.
He wasn't coming because I wasn't here, that's what it was.
Hearing that no one wants to speak at citizens' time, I'm close citizens' time. And just because it's not a meeting, if you have a question or have, anyone has a concern, if you're watching this on video, don't hesitate to call. You kind of hate to, I hate to say this, but I will. Catch us and ask the questions that you want to ask. I think we're all accessible, we're in the communities.
Can go shopping for it.
Yeah, so, uh, don't hesitate to ask us a question if you have a concern. If we don't know about it, we can't work on it. Uh, we're down to committee reports. Solid Waste Committee.
It's ninety-nine.
Thank you. Roscoe, you, you the chair of the, no, I'm the chair. You wanna handle that?
Be happy to. So the, um, the Solid Waste Committee did have a meeting on September first. Uh, main discussion topic was the, um, uh, everything centered around the relocation, uh, or the closure of the Bristol landfill and the need to look at our, um, our solid waste rates that we charge at the tipping, um, tipping floors, tipping station. Um, I provided a, uh, a comparison of what we're paying currently versus what the costs will be when we move or with, to a new landfill. The, uh, the landfill that we used our, for our budget, or, um, shoot, our business plan was the one in Bluntville, one we, uh, have a contract with. I guess we'll start Monday for, uh, temporary. Uh, so those differences resulted in a, uh, difference of twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents per ton increase in our, um, in our costs. Largely because we're gonna have to, we can't get eight loads, we average eight loads a day, we can't get eight loads to the Bluntville area with three trucks. Uh, so we'll, we'd have the need to, uh, to purchase, to either purchase another truck, trailer and hire an employee, or have some, um, contract assistance to, um, to get those down there. We gave some, some different options for additional things to, to consider. One included, uh, the, um, four tires per year, we're gonna be paying more for tires. Uh, do we consider removing the, eliminating the four free tires per car, uh, that we currently allow? Um, also, the transfer station, um, itself, uh, the building, um, is used by citizens quite often and that eliminate, or makes us have to, uh, to stop work on the floor until, um, um, they can get off, whether they're unloading the trailer or what have you. So there was a discussion on whether you should require a five-dollar minimum for using that, still make sure that all the convenience stations are, are free, um, for, for citizens as they continue to be. And then, um, another discussion topic was, uh, whether we look at changing the, um, the transfer station hours, uh, due to the, um, change of landfill. Uh, after all that discussion, really, the only recommendation that we could have at this point was to, um, recommend schedule on a public hearing for the rates themselves, uh, for the proposed increase. Uh, that public hearing to be, um, was recommended for September twenty-second at five o'clock, um, to consider the amendments to the transfer station fee structure. Uh, that was a recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee.
Okay, we have a, do we have any discussion?
I just don't want to get rid of the four tire thing, because I don't want any more tires in Quill Run, and I know that's where they'll end up, taking away.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Lori.
I said I don't want to do the, taking away the four tire thing, because I don't want them to end up in Quill Run, because we already have them there.
When she gets done? Well, I'm gonna speak anyway. I'll shut up while I go before you, hey, I'm gonna shut up this time.
Go ahead.
I agree with you, I don't think, you know, one of the reasons for the transfer, for the landfill and the convenience stations was not, clean up some of these illegal dumps. If you're gonna put it on the backs of people and they're gonna roll it over the bank. I also don't agree with the, I worked at the landfill, started my career here at the landfill. I don't agree with charging the public coming in five dollars a thing, and I'll tell you simply why. You charge me five dollars, I drive on down the road to the convenience station, put it in where it's free, and then you're gonna pay five dollars in fuel to go get the extra that's coming in there now that you don't have to haul. It's coming there and being dropped off, not costing you the fuel to go to the transfer station. I'm all for the tipping fee increase, we got no choice whatsoever. But I would like to see those two items, the tire and... I don't know, um, you know, I've never seen, I just can't believe people coming in there dumping their trash off and getting in the way of our county employees. I don't know. Seems like every time we give a breeze, that somebody wants to do less.
Well, I think it's a regulation that once they get up there. But we have a, but if they want to come in and dump in the dumpster or whatever it is right by the scale house, they can come in and do that free. It's when they go all the way up to the transfer station and want to dump on the floor that they, we have to, the lawyers have to stop everything.
Well, everybody dumps on the floor, don't they, that comes in there?
Contractors, yeah, but, but...
Sure they do, they dump on the floor and they push it over in a can with a loader.
Yeah, I think the argument is that the commercial trash comes in with the dump trucks and the trailers, and they dump and they go, and very rarely do they climb out.
So they're worried about people taking time to load it out of the back of their truck?
It's that, that slowdown, yeah.
So how, how, how much is it, how much is it slowing them down? I mean, I've worked here, I know.
They're an liability factor there, too.
Oh.
Well, if they get out and slip and fall on that slick concrete, they're gonna sue.
Well, what if they fall over in the can, break their neck, they're gonna sue, so I mean, you can't.
They'll climb on their fucking head.
I don't, I, I agree with you, Lori, on the tires, I don't think we ought to charge five dollars. I, I'd like to see those two things go away. I, I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal for somebody to come in there. I can remember, they still got a TV over there, they used to watch TV a lot, is it still up?
There's still TV in the break room, yes.
I rest my case. All right, I, we, and I've been part of it. With the Ridge Valley Fair, the, everything we get, we've been very gracious giving money, this board has. Let's not turn around and make it more harder on people with convenience as far as trash goes. The tipping fee's gonna be, it's gonna be enough alone.
I agree with you on the tires. I think if you, if we start charging for that, we're gonna see a lot more over the bank, gonna be a lot more cleanup, a lot more money spent. Uh, I probably could use more inform, I, I would, I am ignorant on how that operates down there, so maybe a little more observation and research on our part might be needed before we get to a public hearing on the twenty-second.
I would, I would suggest you pay a visit and stay there a couple hours. I, I, I'm not trying to hang nobody.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
I've been there, I know how much work goes on, how much don't. Ain't nobody over breaking their back.
Well, they just make them dump in the can. But that's what we allow them to go up there.
That's what we're trying to do.
We encourage them, but sometimes they, they may have a trailer that they just want to throw something directly off of the trailer rather than carrying it to the can.
I, I think the same goes in play with the tires. If you make it too complicated to get rid of trash, there's a dump around the old mill down the road now, we ain't got no money to clean up. I'm sure you got, everybody's got some in their district. Let's not make them any worse. We're talking about five dollars and a little bit of inconvenience, a heck of a wait a few minutes, what size loader you got? Pushing trash to, boy, I tell you, y'all so far off the can. I, I've been operating all my life, if I can't clean that folder up in fifteen or twenty minutes, you better get somebody else operating. I mean, you're talking about what I know about. And, and I, I will stand behind y'all on the tipping fee increase, but, God bless them, let's not put this yet. We need five dollars later, if it's inconvenience and we ain't getting where we are, then let's revisit it. You good with that?
Let's go ahead.
Over and spend it then.
Let's go ahead and leave it in for public hearing, knowing that we probably don't go pass it.
That's fine if you want public hearing on it, but...
But we got to do the public hearing on the first part.
Public hearings is not really the...
Don't.
Yeah, if we charged the fee, we would need it included into the public hearing. If there's a consensus at the board of not charging the fee, then we would, we would just have the tipping.
Well, I think we got...
The only reason I'm arguing hard is it's my, it's my business, time of year, start October to the end. And right after a public meeting, I'm not gonna leave it.
I said, the, the recommendation of the Solid Waste Committee did include the five-dollar, um, the five-dollar minimum.
But I can see right here, we have three of us that don't want it, for the tires.
I agree with the four tire.
But the other part, I don't think they should be allowed in that building at all. I mean, that's too much liability.
What do you mean by you agree with the four tires, not charging for it?
Four free tires.
Okay, so we have, we have four votes, if we come to vote right now, not to do that, so five?
Well, they're gonna end up in my locker.
I'm not, I'm not for the tires. You know, how long, how long's the county been in business?
For eighteen, nineteen.
I know, I worked there thirty years, how many years you worked here? They've been dumping trash, you know, in the field and coming in the building forever, I don't think it's a viable argument. They can, they can fall, a lot of people bring, that clean up, don't have a truck, they'll hook to a Jeep or a car, and they'll bring a trailer in. I think we're over, overkilling it on that, but, you know, it's five dollars.
Sir, I, I would...
You have a man sitting in that loader waiting for them to unload his little trailer there. He's sitting there waiting on them to unload his trailer.
I'm telling you.
How much does he get an hour, is that five dollars?
When Ray Lawrence worked for the county, I was landfill manager, that was my job, that's what I started out here. And I'm telling you, that's a problem that don't exist, those people taking up too much time to cover that.
Well, I would think, just hearing the conversation, the recommendation of, from the Solid Waste Committee, I would think that would, should be turned down with a following, uh, motion to, uh, to at a minimum have the, uh, the public hearing for the rates.
If, if you charge them five dollars, how much money are you gonna make?
Not a lot, that, well, that wasn't the intent of the five dollars.
All right, then, if they decide they don't want to go to the convenience station, they'll just dump it over the bank somewhere, because you won't make it easy for them to get in with their trailer to dump, and they can pour alongside of the road. What's it gonna cost us to clean those up? It's not been a safety problem, hey, has anybody ever got hurt in there from doing this?
Not to my knowledge.
I think we had one gentleman one time twist, kind of twisted his ankle, and we filed a claim on it.
Well, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty mine.
Yeah.
And I've been on this board seven years and worked for the county thirty-two years, and I don't ever remember anybody having a incident like that. Seems to me like we try to make our, I'll put the speaker on. We just try to make our jobs easier. Uh, we don't do anything to help the public, I would think we're here for help the public. You know, I, I get, we talking about closing at three-thirty, because we don't have to drive further. And I'm not against that, but I think it ought to be looked into. I think we ought to run our hours till we run into a problem and then...
Then consider.
Then consider going to three-thirty, but we trying to cut, we couldn't cut ours, we're trying to cut people coming in, you know, why don't we just close the doors? I'll go along with the tires, y'all go along with the five dollars.
Are they required to wear hard hats for anything at the dump?
The public or the employees?
Employees.
Yes.
Steel-toed shoes?
I'd say if I should...
Why, how can you let the public out and not wear them down in the back of the truck?
They's not a county employee over there wears a hard hat.
I don't think they wear them.
They have steel-toed shoes.
You got anybody that wears a hard hat?
Probably not.
You're assistant county minister, are you ever making visible very much?
Probably not.
Are they wearing steel-toed shoes?
They should have.
They should, yeah, without the, without the...
There is no hard hats.
But, no.
There is a TV in the break room, you ever seen anybody watching that TV?
Uh, I haven't seen them in there watching it, but I've seen the TV.
Well, I think they got plenty of time to deal with somebody unloading the pickup trucks. If they got time for a TV, if we're gonna charge people five dollars, let's take their dang TV away. What do you say, Mr. Watson?
I'm with you.
They watch it during breaks.
So what, what do, what do other counties, what, do you know, have any idea what their rules as far as the transfer station?
You go to Wiss County landfill, you go to Washington County landfill, I've used them, but I worked for Wiss County as the inspector, you back in there and dump your TV just like we did. Check into it and see if I'm wrong. I mean, it, I just, I don't...
Yeah, I mean, we can check on Washington County, Wiss County, it's no problem. I, we did tour Dublin, because they expressed an interest in, in putting a bid in for, for our new landfill. Um, when we were in, when we were at Dublin, they did charge five dollars minimum to come into the landfill.
But they allow them to come in?
Yeah, for the minimum fee.
All right, they don't say you can't come in. All I'm saying, we're not saying they're can't, can't come in, we're just gonna charge you five dollars if you come in, but...
Well, not necessarily, if they come in to dump up front, they come in, everything's free.
Dump up front, I'm lost.
At the weight station.
If they use, yeah, if they use the open top at Scale House, there's no fee, but the folks don't want to use the open top, because they have to throw it hard.
Yeah, it's, it's...
But they're low-profile.
It's, it's hard on people, uh, my wife went to the convenience station the other day, and I was busy with the sofa. One of the complaints I told you about, convenience station person sits in there, and my, and my wife's a, she's a woman, she's like you, carries a sofa. We just give them a raise, nobody comes out to help, never comes out. So, yeah, people don't want to lift stuff up, they want to drop it down, it's the easiest thing to do. Part of our job sitting here is to make things convenient for the people we work for. I don't see what's wrong with them backing in there in a vehicle and throwing their trash out. If they do, let's put a camera up and see how busy everybody is. Let's just, let's in, let's just put a camera up and investigate it and see if it stays busy. If it's busy and they ain't got time for people to dump, then I, yeah, I'll charge it, we charge them ten dollars if you want.
You know, one, one fix on that could be just, just some simple grading around the cul-de-sac to, that's, you know, that cul-de-sac drops off a little bit, you could put something that's four or five feet lower to where they could push straight off into the, into the...
If you can provide them a place...
That keeps them off of the, off of the floor.
If you can provide a place they can push it, dump it straight off, then I'm good with that, but I'm not good...
I have a stupid question. What about those containers that have the end missing, that you just walk into?
That's what it is, but it's about a foot up that you have to pull it into, versus just pushing something off.
Okay.
They, it never makes it to the back of the container. When you leave the door open, that's, they'll stop, it stops right there, and you never feel that container.
Yeah. May I ask you one question? So, let me get this straight in my mind. Well, this really aggravates me.
I didn't notice.
I didn't, no.
Oh, come on, you're passionate about stuff, both of you are.
That's why I gotta give you hard time. That's why I gotta give you hard time.
If you had a baby yet. So, what's the problem causing now? Are they saying they don't have time to work the trash?
It's, yeah, it's the downtime. It's the downtime from folks that pull in and take fifteen, twenty minutes to unload a trailer or a truck or both, um, and the loader shuts down, and no commercial trucks go in, and we wait till that truck and trailer's done, unloaded.
That shouldn't happen.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get them all a nap and then give it to them, and I know they're watching, they'll be mad at me, but, you know, good employees get the work done. And every time we gave a raise, I've been right there for them. And I've worked here. I'm running things by myself over there.
Well, the question is, what do we do now? We, we, we turned down the committee's recommendation, especially for the four tires, we turned it down. But do we include the other two in the public hearing till we can get more information? I guess the first thing we need to do is vote on the committee recommendation and vote it down. So, I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor of the committee recommendation, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Aye.
You, if you want to leave a five dollars in a public meeting, I'm not gonna be here when you vote, but you're gonna vote wherever, you've heard my arguments.
Well, we've taken it, we just took it out. Oh, we're in, in the process. So now entertain a motion for the other two items.
So that, so we would, the motion would be to recommend a...
Public hearing.
Public hearing for September twenty-second at five or shortly thereafter to consider amendments to the transfer station fee structure to include tipping fees and a minimum transfer station usage fee.
Right, at this, at this point.
Okay, I make that motion.
And I want your idea. If that's, if that's a possibility.
If that's, if that's a possibility.
And that would not be, that doesn't need to be included in the, okay, so.
Okay.
What I just stated is the motion.
You blossom. Well, you making a motion for both of them?
It's, it's the same motion, it's just taking out the.
Five dollar tire fee.
The, yeah, the, leaving the tires like it is.
Or free tire.
The fees for tire disposal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second. Do we have any future discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise?
I'm gonna vote again.
Okay. Four?
Just simply because of five dollars. I'll let, I'll let you know right now, I'm for the tipping fee increase.
And we'll, we'll be prepared before the public hearing with some, some, some more information on the five dollars comparisons.
But even if we include it in the.
Include it in the public hearing, you don't have to vote on it.
Yeah, we can still include that.
So let it down, okay.
We can vote no one always, we won't do.
Okay.
Alrighty.
I'll make a motion, let's take our TV out. They don't give them something to cry about.
We have a motion.
Come on, Chris, help me out here if you're.
I think it's gonna die for a lack of a second.
Let it die, I paid it. I'm gonna have to go pull one of them guys off of him on these. Don't you worry about me, I'm highly capable of taking your advice.
Well, say that would die for a lack of a second. Moving on now, that was the budget committee, I mean, that was solid waste. Now going to budget committee. Sean, you gonna keep talking on that?
Yeah, I'll be real quick. Um, so the solid waste committee met just after the budget, the budget committee met just after the solid waste committee had the same, similar conversation regarding the solid waste rates, uh, budget committee, um, uh, basically confer, concurred with, with the solid waste committee recommendation, nothing, no other action was taken. They did look at budget amendment number three, which, um, included some work, some funding from the school system for their textbook fund, uh, for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar amendment. Uh, they have just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars in that fund right now, so they have plenty of money to cover it. They just have some, some funds, some books that have been ordered. Um, the Solville Library ARC grant, uh, when we approved the grant, uh, or the, the match back in February, we didn't spend any money. Um, so the grant has finally been awarded or is in the process of being awarded, so we need to appropriate or get that fifteen thousand uh, back in the books. There were some capital improvements rollovers, the Ad Wolf Fire Department's roof, twenty-seven thousand, four fifty. Um, and then the Conner Rock, uh, well, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. We still are, are working to find a, a contractor to dig that well and we wanna lean on Mr. Call can still to, with his contacts, to try and find somebody there. Uh, that was twenty-five thousand. I've, I'm afraid that may not be enough, so we may have to come back if we get some prices. Uh, next item was the animal control floor that was approved last year. Uh, Mr. Bennett had, had some troubles with the contractor, getting a contractor there. Finally have one on the, um, on the hook to start late September. It'd be about a two-week project, uh, and, um, get that done, so that's a twenty thousand dollar rollover. We had three items in the EDA fund. One of them is that project learn incentive that we've discussed in the past, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, two grant funds related to Pathway Park. Um, we're looking at, um, uh, budgeting of one hundred thousand dollars in each fund, um, for the tobacco commission and for the, um, maybe I just, for sorry reasons, this just has tobacco commission. Um, and then the three hundred thousand dollar budget appropriation for the ARPA fund, that's already been approved. It's just basically getting it back into this coming, uh, this current budget. And then the recovery court was granted a state, uh, grant, uh, of forty-one thousand, three forty-seven that we need to have a budget amendment. They're gonna use that for part-time position to help grow the, 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 the programs. Uh, following discussion, motion was made by Supervisor Sturgill to recommend approving budgetment number three in amount of one million, two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion. It was passed unanimously and that's a recommendation from your budget committee.
Okay, but we have any, any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries.
The only other item we discussed was a request from the Museum of Middle Appalachians regarding some merchants' capital tax requirements and we're gonna be able to work that out administratively.
P R I F A participation agreement.
Uh, you may remember back in, um, November of twenty-one, we created the Pathway Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, um, lovingly called PRIFA. Uh, the, uh, that's a partnership with Washington County and Blaine County. Uh, when we approved all of the, uh, agreements, it was without, uh, it was prior to Washington County's attorney making, um, some recommendations. We came back to the board in March, revised the ordinance. Um, I think the intent at that time was to also revise, approve the revised agreement, but the minutes didn't reflect that. So we do have the revised agreement in your packet. Um, this is the agreement that both, uh, that both Blaine County and Washington County have, have approved. So we'd like to recommend the board approve that and authorize me to, um, to sign that on behalf of the county.
So I guess we need a motion in that because we don't have.
We're gonna approve this one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? We're basically just doing what we thought we did a long time ago, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carries. New business opioid settlement funds.
Uh, we received our first check, annual payment, just over twenty-four thousand dollars for, um, has to be used for quote-unquote opioid addiction mitigation strategies. Um, I just wanted to throw out some options. My initial plan was to recommend, um, funding, providing the funding to the Appalachian Center for Hope for their, um, programming as they get up and running, running. I've also had another, uh, request from the Appalachian Substance Abuse Coalition, um, who they, they partner with the recovery court program. Uh, so I guess we have twenty-four thousand dollars and I'd look to see how, uh, the board would, would like to spend it. We could split it fifty-fifty. Uh, both of, the Appalachian Center for Hope is not gonna be operational this fiscal year, so it would be something that would basically sit in their, in their account. Or we could look at providing some funds to the ASAC knowing, uh, that it's a one-time contribution and we'd come back next year as, as the Appalachian Center for Hope programs get up and running.
Well, basically, we could come back next year and split it fifty-fifty or do whatever. I'm of the opinion, we need to put it to use right now. We don't need to give it to some organ. As much as I wanna support this out here on the same campus as us, because they're not up and running and this is money received as because so many people have been on drugs, I would like to see it go into a program where it gets immediate help to the individuals. That's my personal opinion. Not saying that, you know, a year from now, we can go back and give it all to this, but this particular twenty, we're only voting on this twenty-four thousand. We're not setting policy for anything in the future.
What about, do we need to fund anything on the direct credit court?
Their, their grant funding is, is pretty substantial, it's pretty solid.
That's, that's seemed to have been a very good thing.
Yeah, and, and this, this, um, Appalachian Substance Abuse Coalition, they, they, they're a pretty strong partner with recovery court. So this will be, you know, supporting the recovery court in essence, it's about.
I'll entertain a motion. So, motion. You wanna stake that motion on?
Appalachian Substance Abuse Coalition.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to throw some information in just for food for thought.
Go right ahead.
It's a pretty widely known, at least in, in, in my circles, that it takes at least three years of treatment for every year of active addiction. And I just found out the other day that there's a company, or a coalition called SAMSA, which is, I don't know what the acronym stands for. Basically, it's talking about the Suboxone treatment. The old term is medication.
Therapy.
Therapy management. Anyway, long short of it is, they're landing on this, they're just going to swap the opiate use for the Suboxone and get them back in the workforce with no real plan to get them quote, off the medication. So I, all I'm saying is just informational to understand that whatever we choose to fund, we're looking at a long-term process here. Probably forever for the patient. Uh, originally, my understanding was it was gonna be a short-term course and short-term is defined as three years for every year of active addiction and then they recover away from the drug, but now the thought process is, it's not gonna happen. You're just trading drug A for drug B and we gotta maintain them in sobriety, um, and be able to get them back in the workforce to be productive. So that was just my comment.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
This is kinda a little bit off topic, but just coming out of the hospital, having my baby, it, it was amazing to me how they were like, are you sure you don't want this? Are you sure? And I'm like, no, that's a, no, I don't want that. And literally it was like, I thought I was crazy for not taking it. So I feel like, how do we do something in the beginning, like to not make it so easy?
I did the same thing, Lori, that. I said, I don't want no, no pain meds when they done my knee.
Yeah.
Your baby took. Did you care for me? I was worse than that. They cut my leg off. I thought you had.
Rusko's the first fan to have a baby.
Yeah, but I turned it down too. I, I've, I've had very poor people in my family because of drugs. I, I don't care.
Right, and even when I went to pick up my prescriptions, they still filled that prescription for that controlled substance and I was, they're like, well, you might need it when you get home. Well, I might, if I do, I'll call you and you can fill it, but I just, I was shocked at how quickly they were just trying to push that on me.
I agree. Don't trade one drug for another.
Yeah, exactly. Food for thought.
The doctors, the doctors don't want phone calls.
True. They don't wanna do that extra work.
Alright, so we have a, we have a motion and a second that we approved, the twenty, the current twenty-four thousand, seventy-two dollars for the Appalachian Substance Abuse Coalition, Coalition. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous. Oh, now to the highlight of the meeting, a report from a county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple of items. Um, Riverside, Reeve Presley waiting on the private process server to find her. Uh, I've been trying to follow up with him this week to see what luck they've had. Uh, he's not responding to me, so I'll probably call him tomorrow. Um, Quail Run, uh, one of, there was three owners, the sister that lives in Russell County gave her land to a brother. Um, we need to get her out of lawsuit. I've got that draft. I need to get that filed and get a hearing set in that case. Um, otherwise, it's just various things that come up that, uh, the administration asked me to work on and I try to do it. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. We did talk about water collection yesterday, um, which will be kind of a long process to figure out how to get moving with the, some sort of system to make it work, uh, collecting the non-user fees and how far back can we go? So we're working on that. But that's all I have to report right now. Unless anyone has any questions.
What would we add on our two other two suits?
Uh, the airport and the truck stop. So the private airport, there was an email exchange because Ms. Odell had requested information from the administrator. Uh, that got sent to the attorney for Bay Court and she responded, said she's been trying to communicate with the attorney. She's unclear whether she has representation right now. She's gonna try to set a hearing date. Um, on her responsive pleading, there was a thing in there saying you didn't file the lawsuit right, so she's gonna try to get a hearing on that. Um, so she's, her staff is trying to get some court dates to schedule that. The other lawsuit, to my knowledge, is somewhat idle.
There's a.
Is there a hearing?
There's a hearing.
They did set a hearing, that's right. They did set a hearing, yeah. Uh, and they did the same thing. They filed a motion saying the lawsuit wasn't correct, how they filed it. So that hearing is to determine whether the court gives them another shot at filing a lawsuit, which they normally do, or if they just go away, so.
Any other questions for our attorney? Thank you very much. Um, report from the county administration and staff.
I'll try and be brief, so I have three things, a, a little memo in front of you. The first item, I wanted to update you on the real estate reassessment RP. Those, um, proposals came back, uh, we did a RP process, proposals came back and we only received one proposal. So just more information than anything else, we're gonna meet with, um, the folks with Pearson's appraisal Monday to talk to them about, um, draft agreement timeline. This keeps us on track with the four-year, uh, reassessment, um, uh, schedule. Um, in addition to that, I wanted to bring up something that, uh, Mr. Richardson has, has recommended to me a couple of times and, um, uh, that would be the creation of a land use committee as we start this reassessment to look at our land use programs, uh, make sure, really, to make sure that we're doing what the state code allows, which I think we are, but there are some recent changes. He's recommending that we have representatives from Farm Bureau, um, Commissioner Revenue's Office, Board Supervisor, of course, um, have an accountant, maybe Mr. Overbay from the Extension Office, um, and, and some others, but basically as a third-party independent review of, of the program, what works, what doesn't work, what can we do better? Uh, so I would like to, um, put that out there that would probably start sooner rather than later. Uh, and in my opinion, any recommendations would not be effective at the start of this reass, this reassessment should be effect, have a January first, twenty twenty-four effective date. You would probably, I would recommend going ahead and making, um, continuing the land use program as it is right now for this next one and change it halfway through. That way, anybody that, you have two years or so to educate the, the farmers on whatever the changes are. Whoever signs up between the twenty-four and the twenty-eight assessments would, would know at that point, but then they'd have, uh, the farmers would have four years, whether it's a, a forest management plan or a proof of, of pasture or utilization or, or that, they, he, uh, Ms. Richardson had a few different ideas, uh, but, um, I do, I don't know if that's a, uh, a, a chairman appointment or is that a per, some per, from each district? Um, I'm, I'm looking for, making, I'm just making, uh, recommendations, but I, I'm looking for direction.
I think we just pick out that, you know, I thought that it, once you got listed here, we have a board, the, the board of, each one of us should be able to serve, well, we can't, we can only have two of us. Otherwise, we have more supervisor meeting. Um, I would just say it'd be me or whoever the chairman is when we get started, we make the appointments.
Okay.
I don't think you want a board with, with seven appointments and then all these other people that we need. Now, I do make, I wanna make one, and I don't know if I understood how you said that, but we got to have the assessment and with the farmer knowing that it's coming so they can fight the assessment. I don't know how the hell else to say that. Because worst thing we can do as a board is to say, have, and farmer gets their assessment for their mountain land and it's, instead of being fifty-four hundred dollars, it's, it's assessed at sixty, sixty thousand. Well, he looks at it, says, but it doesn't matter, it's forest land anyway, I'm not gonna fight it. So we gotta, we gotta make sure when we do it, we give them a chance to come and get a true assessment of that property.
So the, the, and I asked that question with Mr. Richardson, what his, his answer was, in January first of twenty-four, you apply for it. You apply for the current, using the current rules and you're in that program for four years until the next reassessment.
Right.
So the only people that would be affected in his way of looking at it is whoever would apply after January of twenty-six. Uh, so you make the changes somewhere twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five. You give the farmers that two years notice, basically, here's, here's what we're looking for different. Uh, so that if they need to do whatever over the next two years, you don't change it after they've applied 'cause, yeah, I agree, once this January first, twenty-four assessment, you don't want to remove that knee 'cause they're not gonna fight that sixty thousand because it's five hundred dollar an acre land use or whatever land use is. Yeah, but I agree, but the, in his way of thinking, I, he, I think he had that captured.
Okay, I just think we appoint that committee unless somebody on the board, if somebody on the board has somebody, or they really want to be on that committee, let me know and we'll get a committee up and running.
Good.
Anyone has, you know, if you wanna be on that, let me know. Or if you have someone that you really think could be a big asset to that committee, let me know.
So what? We get a grant from you, so we just trying to see if we're doing right thing with the land use permit? Or are we trying to change something?
land use permit or are we trying to change something or?
I think that his, Mr. Richardson's main goal was to make sure, make sure we're doing everything right. And if we need to set up some policies to keep folks from taking advantage of the land use program. So maybe there's someone that's, that's in there that's for the timber that they're not, they don't have any desire to, to use the property otherwise, other than just sit on it for the next 50 years.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah. Make sure it's not being abused.
What we talked about before. I just don't want to hit the farmer.
No, I agree.
That's where we going then.
No, which we-
Good luck on getting reelected again. Of course, Mr. Richardson don't care. He's not going to run.
I'm, I'm the same way with you, you know.
I mean, we're just trying to take out the people who's taking advantage of it. I'm okay.
That's it.
That and make sure we conform, conform to what the state requires of it.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
You might as well be on it. You're a farmer.
Yeah.
Put yourself on it.
I will, I will. Yeah, because I can represent three different entities.
Yeah, so say the county and the farm and the board.
So we'll get some names to you and talk to you. The, the next item, just real quick, the historic designation. Coming back to Appalachian Center for Hope, they're looking at the rehab building and one of the main funding tools that they're, they're hopeful for is the historic tax credits. The building is not historic, is not designated as being historic, nor is it in a historic district. It appears that the most cost-effective and best option would be to try and figure out how to set up a historic district, whether it's hospital healed historic district or, or whatever. The town of Marion has, or the ACH leadership, they've reached out to the town of Marion to take that lead since we're in the town limits. What we'd be looking to do is, do we want this building included in a historic district? There's some potential that we could use that, the same, those same tax credits, maybe not for, for renovations to this building, but depending on what we do. But, you know, I think it would be a good idea to have to be in the district, but there may, there may be other folks that, that don't agree. So we need to, at some point in the near future, not tonight, at the near future, decide whether we want to be in that district or not.
I want to add that in the past, when we did some remodeling or some repairs on this building, we made some more expensive repairs so we would have that opportunity in the future. By that, I mean, when we redid the copper guttering, if we had gone and put a tin gutter or whatever, we would have, we would have lost our chances.
Yep.
And we went that route. And also, I think we did some slate repairs. Instead of going and putting some other type of roof, we repaired the slate and went forward with that. So, you know, our past experience has been we were setting the stage to be a historical structure. And everybody knows I'm against us owning this building anyway, but I'll make that statement. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all I have. I just, at some point in the near future, we'll, we'll bring it back to the board for, for actual action. And then just other informational, I've been asked to serve on the Smith County Hospital Board as they get that reconstituted. So I'm, you know, I think I'll be able to represent the county as a whole on that board, along with Dr. Carter and a few other folks. That's all I have.
Sharing the data like-
Absolutely.
All righty, so we're, we're up to supervisor time now.
Myself.
You're first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to share my appreciation with you all for bearing with me and let me participate electronically during the last couple months and hopefully you'll see me in person from now on. I just want to share my appreciation with Saltmore EMS and the Strize Go On making, I really appreciate it. And I think we're off to a great school year. It seems like all the kiddos are getting settled into their new routines and hearing good things about, about school starting back. So kudos to our school board. I just appreciate this board and the staff for all the time they all put in to make this county move forward. Be careful going home and thanks for all you do.
Rusko, you're next.
Yeah, I pretty much said what I was saying, but be careful going home. Glad to see Lori back. Get everybody on them. Thanks again, y'all. God take care of us. God bless you. Be safe. Watch your COVID.
Dr. Rant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've written down a couple of thoughts here. Couple of things comes to mind, as everybody's probably aware, talking about the COVID vaccine. It's just, there, there's a new version coming out. It is a little bit different than what the previous vaccine is. So I encourage you to get the booster of the new, of the new version, once you have access to it. Also, the flu season is predicted to be quite aggressive this year, from what I'm understanding, because we've had two years of very low numbers. I, I personally predict it's going to be fairly severe in regards to what you think about Fauci. I think he's spot on. I think it's going to be pretty rough this year. So get your flu shot. On a professional level, I've just become aware that there is a potential growth of a training program, not unlike the ENT and, and rescue squad programs and firefighter programs we've got based in Smith County, is a pharmacy certified, certified pharmacy technician training course. The state is trying to partner with several entities to train the people that work in the pharmacies because they put restrictions on who can be behind the counter. In talking to supervisor Sturgill here, apparently Smith County is, is interested in doing that. So there might be an opportunity to partner up with the state and get a, a program going to build a pipeline of training for people that want to enter into that particular profession. I'm not tooting my own horn, it's just, it's another training that, that can open the door for some professionalism. I guess lastly, I wanted to, I think we just touched on some of the tree here, and forgive me if I'm being ignorant on the subject, but with the couple of logging operations that's going on in the county, is there any code that says for every tree harvested, they have to put somebody back? Is, is that something that we could entertain as a county to say, if you're going to harvest one, we need to look at putting one or two back? Like the District of Columbia, DC, if you take a tree down, you got to put two back. And what's driving that is the potential greenhouse effects that's going on worldwide.
I'm not sure the state code allows us to have that requirement.
If you do, we're taking land.
If you tell me I've got to put one back for every tree I cut, I'm going to be standing at the end of my property protecting my property.
I just asked a question.
Isn't that part of land use? Don't check that?
No.
It's not? Okay.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from. It just, it was just a question. I, I was aware of a, of a conversation taking place about, you know, the changing greenhouse gases and, and the effects that trees have on our environment. So I'll stop talking so I don't make you mad.
You ain't making me mad. I'm just being upfront with you. You come up with the old joes, I'm going to protect my property.
Joes, you can cut them down if you want, but they're, they're just reaching effects. But other than that, I, I just want to express condolences.
I don't get mad at you.
Congratulations for the new addition to the family.
Thank you.
And thank the board for all that they do.
All righty, guess I'm next. I want to thank everybody for speaking up and having a good discussion. I think that's important that we discuss these things.
Are you including me in the company?
They're right, I am. You bring some knowledge to the board the rest of us don't have. I mean-
I didn't mean to interrupt.
But you're right. You know, you know, with the Lake Water and Sewer, you worked there. You could fill any places I don't know. Landfill, you worked there. So you answered questions that we don't know. So I mean-
I appreciate that.
It's invaluable. So I want to thank everybody for that. I want to point out that we're getting closer to have the ARP, ARPA money meeting, just actually getting around them. We got a, what's it called? A space study or whatever. It's about-
Water study with building needs.
Yeah, building needs study. Both of those, both of those are getting close to fruition. And when we get that, we can really know where we want to use our money. So that's going to be some opportunities for people here in Smith County to have a work, if we can find somebody willing to work. And I want to congratulate Lori on the, and good to have you back.
Thank you.
And it's good to have the staff in here working with us. It just seems like these meetings go well lately and I'm happy to see that. And I'll hush up now. But thank, thank you, everyone. Mr. Sturgill.
Well, I will say that recently, I've had a couple of great experiences at our convenience stations. There's a gentleman out here at Holiday Station who is outstanding. He-
It's the best one in town.
Yeah. I mean, that guy is great. He keeps that place fickle span and he is, he brings a, a energy of positivity to that station. It's unreal. So there's also a guy down at Wicks's Mill Station who's very similar to that and I really appreciate him. I want to say, big shout out to fire EMS and law enforcement. I know the calls have been high and many here recently and thank you for the job you do and service to our citizens of our county. Also, I want to advertise the Chia Apple Festival. It's September 22nd through 25th. Just remind everybody to try to come out, visit the booths there in front of the Chia Town Library and there and the parade on Saturday. And that's always a good time for food, fun and fellowship in Chia County. Also, I'd like to put a shout out to the county library. Ms. Lykan's is doing a fantastic job down there and they've been a great service and they've really facilitated with our school libraries. They're, they're working a lot as one entity, which I really think is great. So. And also, this is another thing I'd like to say, this is a shout out to one of my former students at Chia High School, who just had a article published in Newsweek.com this week.
Wow, that's cool.
But, and also Lori, congratulations on your new little fellow.
Are you running for reelection? Go ahead, I didn't mean, I'm sorry.
No, it's your turn now. Go ahead.
I, I'm going to show, thank you fellers. People, shut up. Something when you beat them or something. Appreciate you, fellas. People up our way, I'm talking. Just hush for a minute, then you can run that map. People up our way, they need you. And I'm, I'm not saying I go against you. I'm giving what we need to the EMS, but that property there at the school I know is available. When you're heard up our way, 30 minutes is a long time. I know, I've been there. You come up with a piece of place, you holler at me, and I'll support it every way I can. That's, that's what we need to do for the people, is make sure they get good help. So I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate it when we get a call up that way, y'all coming. Some of them are farm accidents, I know. I thought we can get there quicker. I'm done.
All righty, I think our, I think our county administrator has an addendum.
Yes, I, I apologize. I did forget one thing. When we did the RFPs for the landfill, who, who to, to take our solid waste to, those RFPs came back yesterday and I'd like to go ahead and get authorization. It was with, we only received one from the, the Bluntville landfill. I'd like to go ahead to get official authorization to negotiate and enter a contract and with them to, to, into their, it's a five-year agreement with a five-year extension.
Might I ask the clarification? You said you only received one bid, but you got two or three answers back saying that they-
We got, yes.
I think you need to-
No, we, the, the, the one in Dublin will give us a price. They don't, they don't like to bid on projects because they're a governmental agency, but they'll give us a, a firm price. It's higher than what the, the Bluntville one is. But I think it's good to have both in, in case we need a, a backup in the future. But I do, I do, I would like to go ahead and get authorization to, to negotiate that and move that one forward as quickly as possible.
We better have a backup because when Bluntville starts taking all the trash and Bristol's taking, they're going to run into a lot of EPA laws.
We're about that.
It's not believable.
And I'm afraid the state of Tennessee will put a stop to it. We better have some word.
That's another thing. When we cross the Tennessee line, there's a way to shut us down pretty quick.
Yep. So you want to make a motion, is that a fact?
I, I will. But before I make it, I hope we're looking into an incinerator.
Yes, sir.
Be looking in hard. Because I think that's the only solution, the only solve this thing.
We're pushing it. We're pushing it.
I think we have a, a, a regional group that we can pull together for that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion to second to approve it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Charlie, only thing, it meant, Clay, during that solid waste committee meeting, Wally had some pictures of bags of salt that had come from the salt plant. And I, I went to the plant manager up there and told him the problem and everything and they're going to put out a memo on it. They do not send salt over. They're not supposed to. But some bags got, over there, somebody, you know how people are.
Yep.
But I went and talked to them and they said they'd take care of it.
I did, did.
Are we discussing the other thing you and I spoke about tonight?
A closed session.
Yes, we do. Matter of fact, we're, we're ready for a, a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter in the closed session under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property in regards to the solid waste property debate.
Okay, you have a second?
I have a second.
And we approve the Hall and Plague meeting. You're with us, of course. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any-